Calling the Whately Elementary School Committee meeting to order at 4:03 PM. And so we're going to do the CPAC presentation first. Hi Holly and Asia, thanks for coming.
Thank you for inviting us. Okay, so I'm Holly Johnson, the co-chair of the District CPAC Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And we are submitting this report today as part of a CPAC duties required by law in Massachusetts. And this is our first year submitting an annual report because the CPAC just officially passed by laws and elected board members for the first time a little over a year ago, March 23. I think the meeting right before we shut down. So this has been a difficult year for everyone. So first, I want to thank all the teachers and IAs and everyone for just going above and beyond for all our students. The flexibility and dedication they show this year has been amazing and we really are so appreciative. So this year, the CPAC worked with administration around COVID planning to get IEP students as much in-person learning as possible. And while there were, of course, some delays for some families, we feel that the district really did a great job of providing in-person learning to all students and in particular students on IEPs. Of course, you know, students on IEPs will still take a bit longer to catch up and, and adjust to the changes from these, you know, from all the COVID's brought and these long-term needs should really be considered during programming and budgeting plans for the years to come. We also recommend that the district provide professional development and training on managing behavioral issues to all teachers, gen ed and special ed and related service providers and IAs. And develop individual action plans to support students, especially in light of the additional issues COVID restrictions may have caused. It's really important for the kids, the people working with our kids to be trained in de-escalation and behavior management techniques. With the support from the sped department, we were able to continue to hold our monthly meetings and workshops via Zoom. The first portion of our meetings is open to everyone and usually includes a presentation and updates. And that's followed by a private support group for caregivers. And we recently added what we're calling Coffee and Conversation, which is a more informal kind of chat once a month on Tuesday mornings. We also want to say that we appreciate the support from the district administrators and all of you here tonight on school committee or this afternoon. We have built strong relationships with the early childhood and elementary administrators over the years. And we are still working on building stronger relationships at Frontier. We get a little bit more elementary families who are a little bit more familiar with the elementary schools, but we're working to get more knowledgeable at things at Frontier. Board members also regularly attended the sped strategic planning committee meetings. And we have met with various administrators to discuss COVID planning, elementary technology, elementary PD, Frontier, IEPs and 504s and disability inclusion. We've also had admins, principals and staff, school committee members attend our CPAC meetings and we've had some of them give presentations. So while there's some awesome things happening in our district, we are tasked with the responsibility to evaluate this fed program. And we do have some concerns about special education compliance, documentation, communication and training to various degrees throughout the district. We reviewed the district's policies and procedures and there is a special education procedures manual that is well-written, but it's really hard to find on the district website. And most families don't know that it exists. So we would recommend that there is professional development on that procedures manual to all special education teachers and related service providers. And that this document is distributed to parents and teachers on a yearly basis. We also suggest that IEP meetings could be streamlined using, there's a meeting summary template in that procedures guide. So that would help streamline the IP meetings. We don't usually see the template when we go to meetings, but it would be great if that was used. We, we also reached out to the state for data. So if families or staff or community members feel that a school is not meeting legal requirements, they can file a complaint with DESI using their problem resolution system or PRS. And then PRS investigates the claims and determines whether or not the school is in compliance of the law. Due to a delay at PRS, we don't have the official data or number of complaints from each school right now. And we have heard from one family at Whately that filed a complaint with PRS. We're just relying on family data right now. Families can also contact the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, the BSEA, about special education concerns. Then the BSCA conducts due process hearings and renders rulings and decisions. The BSA does not keep data for individual schools in the district, but they keep it as a collective district. And they have received 11 notifications of rejected IEPs. We provided one informational training for our district in the past year. However, that number of rejected IEPs is most likely higher because it has been clear that rejected, partially rejected and unsigned IEPs were not reported to the state as required until recently. So when a parent or family receives the IP, they can sign to accept, sign to reject, sign to partially reject. And if there's a partial rejection, a full rejection, or the IP is unsigned for more than 30 days, the district then has to report that to the state and then the state will send families a packet of information that helps them with next steps and their rights. So when the district doesn't report, then the families don't get that needed information. We also compiled concerns from families using surveys that we sent out through the year. Keeping in contact with our families regularly through email and meetings and support groups. And families often reach out to us through email when they have concerns. So when we saw the same concern brought to us multiple times by multiple families, we included it in this report. Again, overall, families speak very highly. The sped teachers and the IAs and the service providers are amazing. They foster this really great personal relationship with their students and their families. And they build a wonderful sense of community that is a huge strength in our district. However, there are concerns that teachers are overloaded with paperwork and meetings and lengthy assessments, filling in for other staff and planning individual curriculum for every student every day. And this can lead to misservices for students with little or no time to make them up. And a misservice violates the IEP. And this overload can also cause burnout for our teachers. On an administrative level, there are concerns with documentation and adherence to legal timelines. State and federal laws make it very clear what documentation is required and when it needs to be provided to caregivers. And we've heard numerous violations of these laws to varying degrees throughout the district. This may sound like a paperwork issue, but it leads to delays of months of misservices and delayed evaluations. So the IEP process typically starts with an evaluation and between the evaluation to the IEP in hand is supposed to be 45 days. It often takes twice that. And then when you have your IP meeting and you create the IEP, you're supposed to have it in hand within two weeks. It often takes twice that or more. And that really adds up over time to lost services and evaluations for our kids. That's why the state has the timelines in place is to make sure that our kids are getting what they need as soon as possible. Our recommendations would be that all schools use an IEP timeline cheat sheet. And that it is distributed to families and teachers on a yearly basis. So a cheat sheet would just be a one-page. That's kind of, you know, a quick timeline, easy to follow of when things are due and evaluations and paperwork. We also strongly recommend that the district hires a special education team leader for the elementary schools. Most local school districts have this position and Frontier has this position. But Whately does not have it and none of the other elementary schools in our district have that position. A team leader, like the one at Frontier, would handle scheduling meetings, creating IEPs that are roughly, an IP is roughly a 25-page document per student that is updated at a minimum once a year for every kid. And a team leader would take on that. And scheduling and they would also be providing assessments. And this would really reduce the workload for our teachers, allowing them to focus on what they're here for, what they went to school for, which is teaching our children. It would also reduce one of the major issues we have in this district of the delayed paperwork and delayed IEPs and evaluations, because there would be a team leader in place to really focus on that and make sure that we're staying on track. It would also make our schools more attractive to highly qualified applicants and decrease the burnout risk for our current special education teachers. We agree, we have some amazing special ed teachers in our district and we want to keep them. And we want to continue to hire amazing teachers. But when they're overloaded with this paperwork and they can go a few towns over to a school that has a team leader that takes on that responsibility, you can see how we might lose out. So that was an overall picture of the, all the elementary schools and the whole district. And I'm going to just say a little bit about Whately in particular. So there are 326 students on IEPs district-wide. Seventeen of those are at Whately, which is roughly 15% of the total student population at Whately. There are three special education teachers. So that makes the IEP student to teacher ratio at Whately six to one, which is pretty great. Some of the other concerns brought to us by Whately families is that they have requested IEP evaluations to a gen ed teacher. And they never received those IEP evaluations. And we would recommend that all gen ed teachers are informed that any request or concern regarding special education be immediately referred to the director of special ed and that those families receive a permission to evaluate form as required by law. The law also requires that all IEP meetings must include an administrator who can commit funds and services if you are discussing those issues. And this is so that the IEP can be completed during that one meeting. But there have been reports that meetings at Whately do not always have someone able or willing to commit funds. And this further delays the process waiting to get the decisions. As stated again in the, in the district-wide concerns, Whately families also reported that it takes sometimes more than four weeks after an IEP meeting to receive the IEP when it should be two weeks. Families have also reported that special education teachers have had to substitute for one-to-one instructional assistance leading to misservices. Again, the special education liaisons or teachers are required to provide direct service to students, modify general education curriculum, attend IEP meetings, administer special education triennial assessments in addition to writing the IEPs. And based on our conversations with families and staff, we believe that the increased responsibilities placed on our special education teachers at Whately impacts the experience for the students, teachers and families and has begun to impact their ability to follow the legal timeline requirements. Again, we strongly recommend that the district hires a special education team leader for Whately to take the administrative duties off of the sped teachers and allowing them to focus on teaching. That's all I have. I know it was a lot. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
That was a lot, but thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I, I did read the whole thing.
I know. If you thought that was a lot, the whole thing's like 18 pages, I think.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just to be clear, Holly, you're requesting a sped team leader for just Whately or for the elementary?
The CPAC for the, all the elementary schools. None of the elementary schools have it. Frontier has someone in that position.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that sounds like a good idea, but it's a bigger question that, you know, with a lot to consider.
Yes.
I, I think you guys do have some great ideas. I, I'm always big on professional development and, and I like the idea of a cheat sheet too. That would, I've had those in my jobs and they've helped me quite a bit. Yes. And, yeah, I think, I think it was pretty thorough and I look forward to hearing more about you guys working with the special ed department and having some conversations.
Yeah, we've also been working with the anti-racism committee, one including students with disabilities in their work. They've been, they've been very welcoming. We've had some good meetings.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Holly.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to approve the minutes of the April 7th meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And on to the financial statement, shall we?
Hi. So I did send out the expense reports earlier today as well as a short monthly update. You all reviewed six warrants totaling $46,115.2 since we last met. And right now, there's nothing new to report as far as the budget goes. Things are pretty much on track. We're looking really closely at individual budget lines and I've been in communication with Chrissy and other administrators such as the curriculum director to make sure that any accounts that still have significant balances, that we have plans to spend those down so that teachers and materials and supplies and all that are purchased, whatever we need through the end of the year. So we're looking at that, you know, we'll make some adjustments likely and, and move some funds around. We have some savings in certain accounts such as transportation, for example, because we renegotiated the contract. So we're looking at all of those pieces and seeing how we can take advantage of any savings we have this year and, you know, possibly do some things that we haven't been able to do in the past when the budget was really tight. Or reallocate things to school choice to save money for the future. So that's sort of the process that we're in right now. The only other thing that I wanted to add, unless you have any questions, is the COVID update. So the town has fully reimbursed us for our request for municipal cares fund. And we have almost spent down all of our grants. We've been, you know, doing the last sort of rush before June 30th comes along for additional technology, primarily technology or classroom needs. We've spent probably about $100,000 on COVID-related items for Whately elementary schools. Most of that has been funded by grants or by the town contribution through the CARES Act. We haven't really spent a lot out of budget or school choice. Technology has been huge, the HVAC repairs, PPE, all those things that we've been talking about throughout the year. So I just want to give you an update on that as we're starting to wrap up and close out the year.
Okay, there, so those adjustments, your timeout, there's a few spots where the, you know, the numbers were in the negative. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so we'll look at accounts that are in the negative, make sure we understand why they're in the negative and move funds from positive accounts into those so that everything balances out. And then we'll also see, so we paid for some salaries and wages, for example, from school choice. So if we have budget savings, we'll see if we can move some of those things off of school choice and onto the budget so that we can save more in our school choice fund, which just helps us in future years.
Okay. Okay, anyone have any questions?
No, thank you, Shelley.
Nope.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
And now we're at the public comment portion. I'm not aware of any public comment. So if there's anyone on, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. So now we're into COVID-19 update.
Not, not a huge update here. As you know, we've kind of been, we've been rolling, rolling along here. A lot of normalcy coming back to, we call it normalcy back to the schools. And I think we're seeing administratively and I think the teachers seeing, we're starting to see that the kids have really loosening up with the spring weather. So we're kind of seeing the, the, the normal school issues that we face in, in spring, which is both nice to see and we have to deal with them. On the flip side, the other COVID updates, you know, I sent an email out today to sixth grade families and above regarding 12-year-olds. I am working right now with the town of Deerfield, with Chief Pachuric and with the Board of Health to bring in a Pfizer vaccination for 12 and up in our district. And hopefully as early as next week. I have a meeting tomorrow. I did send out a survey to get the level of interest. The level of interest is very high. But the issue that people would wonder why we were doing it with this and other things. There's plenty of J and J, there's a vaccination clinic this weekend at Treehouse. I'll be sending an email out that regarding. But that's for 18 and above. And then Moderna is what is coming out of Franklin County. So Moderna and J and J is what Franklin County has and Pfizer is for 12 and above. So in order to get Pfizer, we have to really look at Baystate, who's got the major shipments of that. And so we're trying to work with them. So that's why it's kind of, people are kind of wondering if there were any questions why on this and not other things that Franklin County just doesn't have Pfizer is readily available. So if we can bring it into the schools, also look at it as an accessibility, if I can bring it here. You know, really any students who, we don't have CVS in our town, you know, so there's a lot of, you know, it was kind of access things. It'd be great to be able to just be able to bring it to the school and do it there. So more to come on that. That's kind of the latest within the, the COVID, COVID update. Any questions regarding COVID in the schools? I guess I can answer that as well.
I just saw an update from CDC. Anybody's vaccinated, they're lifting, don't need to wear a mask indoors anymore.
I saw that too.
But you have to be vaccinated, so.
We probably aren't going to be changing anything indoors. So school has its own policy. It's kind of like they also say, you don't have to be outside in a public place. You don't have to wear a mask. And I immediately sent an email out to the staff and stuff. Does that, does not include school grounds. School grounds are not public grounds. They're public property that are operated by the school. So, you know, we're following those, we're following our kind of protocols probably through the end of this year. Changing things with two weeks left to go. I'm not sure of that as well. We are waiting on the MIA. This is sports. You guys aren't really involved in that. Whether or not they're going to change some of the outdoor sport mask rules, whether or not the pitcher has to wear a mask, which is kind of silly sometimes. Some of the rules there aren't really matching common sense. So we're waiting to hear from them, but we, when it comes to athletics, you play by rules that we all agree to. So you can't just go changing school rules on one school and not all schools. So anyway, side of our stuff.
Okay. Do we know who's giving the anti-racism and equity subcommittee update?
Kelsey was on the other night. I think it was going to be her, but sometimes she comes a half hour in, so.
Okay.
We'll skip, we'll skip her and go back to her if she comes on. If not, I can give you the general overview. Not a whole lot at the elementary level.
All right, that brings us to the basketball scoreboard dedication, shall we?
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. Yeah, so the Whately rec committee had, it was also actually John Edwards who brought up donating the scoreboard to two of the dads that have recently passed away. Steven, I'm sorry, one second. Gary Lawrence and Steve Kies. So I know that Steve Kies did a lot of the electric work to kind of keep the, the scoreboard up and running. And I didn't know Gary, but John Edwards said that he was also instrumental in doing repairs to the scoreboard. So the thought was that it would just be a nice gesture to donate and name the scoreboard after the two dads.
Okay.
And that needs obviously your, your approval in order to go forward with that.
Okay, that sounds like a nice idea. Do I have a motion if we, unless there's any questions or comments on that?
Just logistically, Shelley, do you know if the rec committee is going to provide? I imagine we're doing a plaque on the wall below the, at eye level below the scoreboard in memory of or in dedication to the, whatever wording we come up with. Are they going to provide that plaque or are you going to expect the school to do it?
No, the rec committee will provide that plaque and also they want to put a piece of plexiglass over it for protection. But the rec committee will take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, you know, name the scoreboard after Steven Keys and Gary Lawrence.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. That's unanimous way.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Now we're on to, and thank you for your work on the rec too, Shelley. So now we're on to charging for early release Friday gap care.
Yep, so let me, I think the easiest way to do is just to show my little, my notes, see if you can kind of read along. Except Ethel Mees probably got a really small screen, so I'll read it aloud to you. So basically, we are looking at, so on our early release days in that calendar that we approved last month at the joint meeting, we have this time what we call gap care. It's a time between 1:30 and 3 o'clock where the students who are staying through for the most part for the after-school program, on the after-school care program, we have this kind of gap. And kind of going back, it's, we're looking, when we kind of go into, what we're looking to do is charge $5 for fee for students who want to stay for that hour and a half period. And just kind of some of the details of that, the fee will be used for healthy snack. And also make sure to help offset some of the costs that we have to do for, for the care of students and allowing IAs who are many times being pulled away to cover some of that. Each school is different, so Chrissy can kind of give the details on that. But to be able to pay for those staff members that are watching the students, this is less than the fee of $5 is for one and a half hours is below the $6 an hour we typically charge for our after-school program. Scholarships for families with financial hardship will be arranged to the principal. So we'll continue those who need support. There's not an idea of pushing people away financially, but to, you know, to put a cost in there. And then the out-of-school time program begins at 3 o'clock. And, you know, the rate of each day is 14.50 a day. These are the early release days that we have in our calendar that you approved last month. There are 20 days. And so it's, and just for clarity, it's $5 per day, not $5 for all 20 days. So, you know, I presented this at Deerfield the other night in a long discussion and sued afterwards. Why now? Why, why are you asking for this? You know, there is a transition. We didn't have out-of-school time this year. So there, this is something that the administration has been talking about for a while. We've been providing, we've been scrambling to provide childcare for this hour and a half period. Originally, if you go back to when we started the early release days, this was before my role in this, you know, I was just starting first-year principal, I think, when we started doing this. There was the idea that we, in this gap care program, we were going to do enrichment activities and it was just kind of, we were, for those who had to stay through, it wouldn't just be, you know, recess, so. And what happened was we did a mixture of different things and Chrissy can probably jump in about exactly what happens at Whately. But what happened is we built it and they came. And basically, a large number of students stayed through until 3 o'clock to get picked up because all their friends are staying through and that kind of stuff. So part of this is offsetting costs and also putting a decision about whether or not to stay for that gap care as well. I mean, because we are, like I said, we're kind of resetting the, the after-school, we didn't have after-school care this year for the most part. Now is the time to, to consider this. This was on the table originally when we, we, we were going to charge for this gap care originally. But I think in discussions with school committee, we said, you know what? We wanted families to get, to buy into the professional development day. You know, those, those early release days and we've seen the, hopefully we convinced the school committee importance of those days. Yeah, so as in general, I try to summarize that.
Aries, I think my question would be, we are going to charge families, would that time be a little bit more structured than it has been? Because, you know, from what I hear, it's kind of like recess.
Out of the gate, Chrissy, you have thoughts on whether, whether or not we'd be much different than it is now?
I haven't really given it much thought.
I haven't really given it much thought. The way that we had run it before was we broke the kids into three groups and then there were three stations for them to be at. A possibly the computer lab, outside playing, and then usually doing some sort of art activity with camp director Lola, who loves to do that kind of thing. So some, something along those lines.
Is it, Darius, is it going to still be a 1:30 dismissal on those days? Cause I know, I don't know if it was Katie that brought up to have maybe, to consider having fewer days, maybe getting, starting earlier. Cause you know, how, how much professional development can you get done for those days where people are leaving their building to go to another building to meet with their peers?
Yep. So what we did, we had all this discussion and in the development of that calendar and we also surveyed families. We, we, one of the things we were considering, I'll answer the other question too, is whether or not Wednesday versus, could we did Wednesday during the COVID thing? Whether or not Wednesday was better than Fridays, overwhelmingly, it was like seventy something percent of families asked for Friday, not Wednesdays for early release. Within our development of our professional development, we, we talked about the, the hour and a half ongoing rather than the larger chunks of times and then that you start something and then you go back to it a month later. The month, the week after week is, is those kinds of, you know, you can set things and do specing, things in, can't come up with Wednesday, it's been a long day. Where we can work on projects and get them done instead of saying you start something, you go, you start, and then if you did something in between, you never get back to it, of that kind of thing. So we, we, we committed to continue with this model. So the longer half-days, less longer half-days, like some of the, maybe our smaller neighboring districts do like a Wednesday half-day and the kids are dismissed at noon. And they get more hours in, we thought the shorter time period on multiple times getting, was better. So that is the plan for next year, it's already been voted and moving forward. So we're going to adjust that, that's the next year conversation within that. I, I think, you know, we kind of, at Deerfield, the question was brought up, it's like, there's a, what's the school's responsibility in providing childcare versus education? And if we did half-days, would we be doing this for that longer period of time and paying for it? Right now, the funds that we pay for this, Shelley, I can ask you, as you think about it, how do we currently pay the out-of-school time? You know, in the sense of, is that coming from general budget?
Yeah, so in the past, the gap coverage has been paid from local budget.
All right, so, you know, we're paying that average, or not out of the out-of-school time program, these monies would go into the out-of-school time program and such. So it is that kind of philosophy. So, you know, part of our, you know, the importance of our school is to have professional development for our teachers to improve, improve in learning, improve instruction, also those parent conference days and that kind of thing that we said is important. By providing time, either you're paying for more time or you're providing time by doing these kinds of early release days. And so it is, you, you go out there and you kind of summarize it, it is a, the question of what is the school's role in this particular community? And do we want to have that as a free service or do we believe that, you know, a nominal fee? You know, when it's free, people sign up and Chrissy can probably give, I don't have the statistics for Wheatley, you know, Chrissy can pull them out of the air, but it's very easy. I'll just, you just stay through today. Whereas if there's a small fee, even a small fee, we've learned, makes a parent go, do I want you to stay through today? No, I'll finish whatever errand I was doing that day, if it's an errand, or if it's, you know, if it's work, you're probably going to be staying through anyways, you know. So it makes, you know, makes people pause on that, maybe reduce the numbers of that gap care. And then with the reduction of numbers, you can also improve the quality because you're not trying to just manage your larger numbers. But, so, I'm just being very transparent about that.
The fee, the fee is going to go to the out-of-school time fund? Is that what you're saying? So does that, so that's not going to cover the salary of who's, cause it's not out-of-school time, time, right?
I mean, we can always consider shifting that last hour and a half for those twenty days over to out-of-school time. You know, it depends how many kids sign up, if it is truly an out-of-school time staff member versus an IA covering, covering it. I don't, I don't know how many kids Wheatley usually gets that stay, but we can certainly look at covering it from the fund that the money is going into.
It feels like it was about a decade ago, but if my mind serves, we usually get about half the kids who stay.
And with the $5 fee, it might be less like Darius was saying.
And how many of those kids after 3 o'clock stay?
You're really asking me to dig back to a time before COVID.
All right.
Our after-school program usually has between twelve and fifteen kids in it. So those same kids would go from that, from the gap care to the out-of-school time program after care, unless I'm understanding it incorrectly.
Bob, when my kids stayed, it seemed like the majority of the kids were getting picked up at three, but that's just, that's not an official opinion. That seemed like that a lot of them disappeared when I was picking my kids up, everybody else was getting picked up too.
Maybe it's something we can, we can chart for next year to give us an idea. Because if, if, you know, if we're, if it's $5 for an hour and a half, they're also paying money from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock. So is it all going to go in the same bank, the after-pro, after-school program? And who, you know, who takes, you know, I know there's somebody that takes care of who's there and, and how much somebody owes and stuff. So I just, before it was free, now it's $5, which is still a great deal.
I can get numbers of who came prior to COVID, the last time we did this, if that's helpful for anyone. And then also numbers of those kids who then went on to the out-of-school time program.
I don't know if this could be an option, but those families that are paying for that after-school time on Friday after 3 o'clock, then maybe we could give them that 1:30 to 3 for free. And only those families who are wanting until 3 o'clock pay the $5, because I think Darius is right. It's not as needed by some of the families. And you're going to get the families who really need it versus those who, you know, could go home.
So the other, the other thing that was brought up at Deerfield, which is something that's on my list of things to do, it's the time of year where you're just getting swamped. But they talked about asking if we could do a, what about multiple siblings? You know, do we, can we do a sliding scale, you know, for, if you have more children staying through, you need the family is the same, but the cost goes way up if you have three kids in the building. That starts to get a little bit, you know, where we can, so it's on my list to create a, so what Deerfield did is they tabled it, they wanted to think about it more. It's a big, you know, it's a, it's a big, it's a big decision community-wide. They wanted to see where that was. Not that I'm encouraging you guys to table it, but I also understand it is one of those where you want to run it by, if you want to run it by, you know, test, you know, put out the balloons, they say, test the air, whatever the story is to see, you know, how people really feel about that when they really slow down and think about that kind of thing. So we're open, we don't, we don't have to make a decision now, I really need to know by the end of June.
Is there something we're going to vote on? I don't see there's a vote.
Not today, it was just presented today.
Okay.
All right, so we can vote on that next time?
Yeah. I think, you know, whatever we do with the four elementary schools, we should have it uniform word-wise. If, if somebody's after three staying, if we're going to get free between 1:30 and 3, we got, we should make it uniform between the four schools.
This is where it gets complicated, Bob, because this is where you guys have your control. And it's, understand that this is where I kind of was choppy when I, I reached out to Chrissy, because each after-school program is very different. You know, at, in Deerfield, just because of the sheer numbers, they, they have to bring in a lot more outside staff. So this money is a little bit more related to paying for some of that outside staff. And Chrissy, I don't know how many outside staff people you have weren't, weren't staying through, you know, you have staff members already there who are staying longer. And the numbers kind of shift from school to school as well. So I'm just saying, Bob, and also you can't do, you can't do it unless you're going to do a joint meeting. So we can do a joint meeting and have this discussion, but it's one of those, you can have it differently. You know, it's a, it's a small difference between school to school and budget-wise and number of people staying after is also different too, you know.
Okay.
But it sounds like we're just discussing now and we're going to vote on this next month, so.
Yeah.
People are, any other questions on it?
No.
All right, thanks.
I think Maureen's.
I see Maureen froze.
Yeah.
So the next, as she logs back in, I'll get your back.
Yeah, my, my computer just shut down, so I'm on the iPad now.
All right. All right, the next thing we're on there, Maureen, is the full day pre-K. You guys asked for Amy to join us, you just asked some questions of her.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Amy, thanks, thanks for coming.
You bet. Thanks for inquiring about preschool. So if you'd like, I can start with talking a little bit about how we foresee next year for preschool. We are planning on having full day, five-day preschool for next year and Wheatley, as usual, has a really healthy roster. We have tons of people interested in Wheatley right now. We have about nineteen families, nineteen kiddos that'll be coming for next year. And it looks like right now there's between fifteen and seventeen kids that will come on any given day. And so that'll be an estimated tuition of between a hundred and a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We don't have that confirmation roster just yet because we're still waiting on families to get back to it. We're kind of right on the tail end of our registration period. So we're waiting to hear back from families that we've accepted, whether or not they're accepting us and if they're actually going to come and put a deposit down. So we're kind of right in the middle of that right now, but there are not many people who decline a Wheatley invitation. So I would say we will end up with just about that many kids, right around that nineteen number. And you guys are actually very fortunate because you have a really seasoned teacher, you know, you have Christie Huntley there with a great team. And so she is really well-versed on having a little bit higher numbers and always has, has a really great thought-out program. This year, she really, you know, was able to do more of a nature-based program and it, that lent itself really well to COVID, although that really is just an extension of her own philosophy. And so, you know, kids were just not only able to, you know, attend in person, they were able to continue to thrive within your, your program there. So that's been something really fantastic. Of course, we plan on keeping all of the, you know, we're going to continue to follow all the health and safety standards, but we're really looking forward to those being loosened up a little bit, as every grade is. But, you know, it'd be nice to see our little guys be able to, you know, start to share some of the items that we have in a preschool classroom. And, you know, right now, everybody is still looking at individual items and individual things so that, you know, we're not cross-contaminating anything. So that, we're really looking forward to a time when we can do that. We're also feel like we're able to go ahead and make that step to full day because we're not as concerned about the lunch period and the nap time that we have, or rest time, if you will. You know, that was a concern with us this year and, you know, talking with Meg and our nurses about having kids not have masks on, you know, for extended periods of time. So at this point, kids are, kids are eating and obviously they're taking masks off, but, you know, that nap or quiet time can last any time between, you know, depending on the, depending on the classroom that you have that year, but any time between a half an hour or, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes. And that just felt a little bit too long this year. So we're happy to be able to get back to that next year without the worries that we had this year in terms of COVID. And of course, eating, you know, kids do not eat quickly at a preschool age, so that could, that could be an extended time as well. So we, we, we're not going to have to worry about that, you know, for next year. Chris, have it, yeah, no, no, go ahead.
You talked a little bit, you, you mentioned Christine's philosophy for teaching. I, I was wondering if the preschools in the district kind of all follow the same teaching philosophies. I know my daughter went to Deerfield, she had Kathy Barchiano, she does a very like Reggio Emilio kind of philosophy, which I loved. I just wonder how the district ties together, if it does at all.
That's a great question. We actually, we actually don't. We do try and incorporate a little bit from all the different philosophies. We do a child-centered philosophy along with Reggio, along with nature-based. So it really, I really do look to the lead teacher in the classroom to how they want to run the program. One of the things we always do though, is we have that center-based, that, that center-based child philosophy. So we're all working on those same things. We do adhere to a lot of the, it's called the pyramid model and it's a model under Desi that really addresses a lot of early childhood, social, emotional foundational type work, where we're always looking at, you know, heavy social skills and really rich relationships. And so that's really the foundation of every program, regardless of whether it's nature-based or Reggio. And of course, you know, anything that falls under the special education field, we really try and make sure that we're looking at what's best for that individual kiddo and what works best for them. And that's really a team effort too. So, did that answer your question?
Together from the, from the towns.
Yes. Yep, yeah, yeah.
So you said, I think you said nineteen? Kids are applying. Did, did you mention if there was a waitlist at all?
There is not right now. We're actually quite lucky. We, we usually do have a waitlist in Wheatley, but we are, quite honestly, Maureen, it won't surprise me if by September we do have a waitlist because we always have people that, you know, it occurs to them that they want to come to preschool. And so we have people that maybe apply a little bit later. And in Wheatley, we usually accept between nineteen, twenty, twenty-one kiddos. And so we're right, right at that cusp right now, but it wouldn't surprise me if by September we might have a waiting list. And again, we're, we're still waiting for parents to get back to us as well, so we might have some shifting that happens there. You know, people do decide that, you know, they're moving or they need more of a full day till 5:30 option. As Chrissy was saying, we don't have the extended day this year. And so that might influence some parents as well.
Will we have that in the fall? Will we be?
We will not have that in the fall for preschool, no. None of, none of our programs actually will this year. We didn't have the interest. We had like two and three families and actually in every program that requested that, which financially just wouldn't make sense for us to go ahead and do.
Because I know we had hired staff specifically for that, so how does that affect our number of staff?
We, so the person that we had hired in the past, for example, last year, Maureen, that was somebody who had just come in towards the tail end of the day to go ahead and do that piece for us. So that person has actually come, they, they left when COVID started. They had a one-year contract and so it wasn't, it's not a matter of replacing or leaving, you know, getting rid of anybody. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So I know that, you know, we didn't open full day to preschool because of fears around nap time and eating. However, there have, there are other schools that are back full-time, they have been napping successfully. Is that really just in our district like a fear or is it a spacing issue? You know, I, and I, a second part of that question is, you know, from 1:30 to 3, what are those teachers working on when their children go home? Cause that's not their, their end of the day. Are they helping out in other classes? I don't know, I just wondering.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, Bethany. We certainly do, there are other programs in the area that are, have, you know, started right away, having lunchtime where kids were doing, having their lunch with their masks off and napping. But we really work together with our district nurse to decide that what's best for our district. And really made that decision as a team that none of our preschools would go ahead and report that, that, that was a bit of a risk that we weren't willing to take because our numbers were so good within the buildings. So we didn't want to do that. What we were able to do was, you know, we started off having kids there till 12 and then we really pushed it up till 1:30, right? As close as to we could, to when we thought kids would really start needing their nap time. And so we did increase it a little bit by having kids stay for lunch and they do happen to eat outside. But that wasn't something as a team that we decided we wanted to go forward and do. And, you know, in general, for a public school, we're actually really lucky that we've been back in person for preschool since the fall because so many programs were not able to do that. But, you know, we, we have a program and we have a district that really supports early childhood. And so that was something that, you know, we kind of started. Um, and so that was something that, you know, we kind of started right along with everybody else, which is really nice.
And what are the teachers doing in the afternoon?
And their question about that, yeah, so there, there are some kids that stay within the building that are employee children. Um, and so they are staying, um, and they've been staying since the beginning of the, um, in the fall. So they were able to stay in the program without having too many kids around. Um, and then they do have other assignments throughout the building. Um, and so they do, wherever they've been needed, they've gone to.
Okay, great.
It's also, they have a lot of, um, to, to take your program outside. They've got a lot of equipment moving in and out every day. And then they also have to, at the end of every day, while the two remaining kids are napping, they're sanitizing everything because all the individual things.
Good point.
We, we've learned how to put a bag of Legos through the dishwasher, so that's.
I, you know, that's a good point, Chrissy. We've been, we've gotten, so it's funny how, what you get used to, but that was such an issue, you know, especially around wintertime about the sanitizing. That's always an issue anyway in early childhood. Um, but to now have kids have individual items, you know, we don't just have one bag of blocks that six kids are playing. We literally have six blocks, uh, that needed to be sanitized and, you know, gotten ready for the very next day. Um, so great point, Chrissy. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of time spent moving materials, cleaning materials. Um, and really just getting ready for the very next day.
Are, are we going to have a generation that doesn't know how to share?
No, we are not. That's on top of the list for next year.
Well, I think the opposite is going to be true, that they're going to be so excited to be able to share. That they're probably going to share better because, you know, we've been telling them for so long now and you can't touch anyone else's things. I think once we, once we take that away, I think it'll be a little bit like, um, when the kids came back to school after being home for six months, they were so excited to be at school, even some of the ones who sometimes grumble about having to be at school. Everyone was thrilled to be here. So I think there's going to be some good side effects from all of this mess.
They all know how to wash their hands.
For sure, for sure. And I will say at the beginning of all this, certainly just like every grade, but we were really, I mean, the early childhood team was like, what on earth? How are we going to do this? Because it's all about social. It's all about kids being in proximity of one another and learning those social skills. But, you know, kids truly are resilient, especially at this age and they, even before I would say some of the older grades, you know, they were so adept to wearing their masks and to just, you know, if, if they were outside, they were good with that. If they were inside, even with the room looking very unfamiliar to them. Um, they were very adaptable and I would say within weeks, um, we're certainly used to, um, you know, the new way of doing things. And kind of never look back. So.
Well, that's good news that we're gonna be going back to full time in the fall.
Yeah, we're all very excited. The teachers are all very excited to get back to, um, what would resemble a normal schedule, for sure.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Amy.
You're very welcome. Thanks for having me.
Great to meet you.
Yes.
Thanks, Amy.
You bet.
Come anytime. Okay, so, um, we're at the point where we would review Shelley's contract. Do we want to save that for the end and possibly go into executive session?
I would, I would recommend that, why don't we do the reports and then just put that at the end of business, so other people can go.
Yeah, okay. So I don't have a report as the chair. Um, the collaborative, all I have to say is there's still, they've been having multiple extra meetings for their strategic planning process for the next, um, maybe five years. And also their executive director search is down to two. I think it was down to three and one dropped out, so they're doing the interviews for those two. And one, one of those two is the one who is the interim executive director. So that's all I've got. Um, Chrissy.
Hi, so I'm really, really happy to have a report that's got some like fun stuff in it that the kids have been doing, something that would be in a, in a report in a normal year. Um, so as the parents among you know, we had our Mother's Day plant sale, um, during the month of May. And the, the global leaders, and for anyone who doesn't know, that's our Whately Elementary School version of a student council. They held a fundraiser for Asante Sana for Education. Asante Sana is an organization that provides tools, education, medical support and mentors for children in Tanzania. Through this fundraiser, the students were able to donate sixteen hundred dollars to Asante Sana. So thank you to all of you who now have beautiful plants at your house. Um, and I just wanted to share a quote off of the Asante Sana Facebook page. And, and for those of you don't know, there's a, a longstanding relationship between Whately Elementary School and, um, the schools in Tanzania that are, uh, supported by Asante Sana. Um, over the years, the Whately Elementary School fundraising has provided a roof for a teacher's house and so many student desks for the primary schools built by Asante Sana for Education. Computers, furniture and school supplies for Bea Montessori preschool and our students empowering students programs and a roof, a new roof to cover a courtyard between classrooms at Bea Montessori School, allowing our students to enjoy being outside during the hottest and rainiest times of the year. This year's fundraiser was their most successful and after the most difficult year we have endured with all twenty twenty fundraisers canceled, we couldn't be more grateful. The student, staff and families of Whately Elementary School raised enough funds this year to provide over a three month supply of daily fresh fruit and healthy baked snacks we provide during the school day and an end of, end of the school day mug or two of fortified porridge for the eighty-five Bea Montessori preschoolers. So, um, well done, Whately, students, staff and families. That's, um, it's such a huge thing for the kids to be able to have this thing that resembles a normal year. Um, but also an opportunity to sort of think beyond all of this current mess that we're in, um, and, and take other people into consideration and other people who are um, in, in difficult situations as well. So, um, we're very pleased with that.
Yeah, it's such a great thing for the kids to see how they're helping others less fortunate.
It's so amazing because they can actually see it. We have a connection to this school. Um, if you go on their website, you can see in one of the classrooms where we donated desks. The desks are stamped with donated by Whately Elementary School. They've got, um, a Whately Elementary School banner that hangs in their school, so, um, the kids can actually see. We, we sold these plants, we made some money and this is what it's going to. So, um, it's not sort of this, we donated money and we don't really understand what's happening with it. So it's a really great experience. Um, and at one time Terry Anderson, who sort of heads this up, traveled to Tanzania to, to check things out over there. And Darius doesn't know it yet, but I'm going to be asking for a future myself at some point. Um, the PTO, um, last week, for those of you who don't know, was Educator Appreciation Week. And boy, did the PTO did a great job honoring our staff, um, during a year when appreciation is so important. Um, it was food and gifts and just so much effort by the PTO and by individual families who came to drop things off. Um, a, and we're aware that everyone's kind of slammed right now. This, everything is not normal yet. Um, and so it, it means even more that people went to such lengths to, to make sure that our staff members, all of them, you know, we don't, I don't call it Teachers Appreciation Week. It's educators and, and really everyone who's in this building is an educator. Um, and, and so I'm appreciative of the appreciation, um, because I, I've been here and I, I've watched what the, the staff has had to do to pull this year off. And so it means a lot to me that.
It's well deserved.
Have gone out of their way to, to, to make their appreciation known. Um, we also had a food drive, which was great. Um, through the work with Empatico, the fourth graders held a food drive to benefit the South County Senior Center. They collected an impressive amount of food to provide groceries for local seniors. Chief Savini came over so the students could fill his cruiser with the donated goods and then he brought them to the senior center. Um, and it really was very impressive what was collected. On the last day to collect was Monday and I think every kid that I took out of a car came out with a bag of groceries. Um, so I was really kind of surprised by that. When we left on Friday, there was a nice collection of, of food items, but on Monday morning, it just looked like Stop and Shop blew up in our, in our front hallway. So that was wonderful. And it, again, a way for kids to, to be thinking about giving back and helping others, um, but in a local way. So they could, they could see what it, where it is that the, the food went. Um, our poll testing continues to be negative every week and it's such good news to get. Uh, I'm gonna send off an email after I get off here to let people know that the next results came in. Once again, we are undefeated, so I'm, I'm pleased with our record. Um, I have some, some dates coming up. Um, MCAS for us will begin, uh, on Monday, May seventeenth and will end on May twenty-seventh. And never in the history of MCAS, um, have I experienced being able to get it done within a ten day window. So I'm, I'm pretty happy about that from beginning to end, including makeup time. Um, we will be done within ten days, so that's pretty good news. Um, we've also worked hard to make sure that the kids understand, um, how to approach this test, that, that they're, they're likely going to see things that they have not yet been exposed to in a classroom because things have been so different. The MCAS test is designed around what a normal year looks like. Um, so we've done what we can to make sure that kids are not stressing out about it. It's been a, a very stressful year to begin with. So, um, we paid close attention to that to make sure that the kids understand that really the whole point is come in that day, do your best, just like we ask you to do every other day. Uh, we will have virtual kindergarten orientation on May twentieth, but we're also having, um, kindergarten visiting day. We felt like it's so important for those little ones and also for the parents who've never been in the building to have a chance to come in and look. So, um, we are doing it after school hours on June third, so we'll have small groups of parents come in together. Um, and everything, everything will be sanitized before they get there. Everything will be sanitized when they leave. But we really felt like it was, it was important to us to get those kids in the building. Um, we will have sixth grade graduation outside on June eighth. Um, prior to that, on, on May twenty-sixth, the sixth graders will also be taking a little trip over to Frontier to, uh, see what life is like over there. Um, and that's about it. And I'm, like I said, I'm so happy to give this report because I had some dates to share, some things that are going on and some, um, some other events that have happened. So this feels like the, the first happy non-COVID-ish report that I've had to give all year. So only, only going up from here. I, I'm pleased with, with the direction things are going in. The numbers here have remained low and just can't wait for it to be behind us. But I want to thank everyone for helping us get through this year. Not that it's over, we still, we still have some time left. But, um, it really has taken quite a village to get through this year, so thank you to everyone.
I got a question for you, Chrissy. Are all our kids back in school?
We still have, excuse me, four students who are home.
Okay.
Um, Chrissy, you mentioned, um, kindergarten moving up day, which I think is great. Um, how many kindergarteners are expecting for the fall?
We are expecting, um, sixteen right now. We are going to run it, add in the recorder. I don't know if it's this weekend or next weekend, um, just to let people know, we still do have a few school choice spots in a couple of different grades. Um, you know, we like to keep the class size low, but I also, you know, there's, there's also.
Have you accepted school choice kids yet?
We have, we have, we've accepted six, um, and then there's also some families we haven't heard back from yet. And there's some other families that we had to put on a waiting list, so there's still a lot of sort of shifting going on there. But we did see a huge number of applications come in, but it was about, um, frustration with the, the school districts they were in at the time. Um, a lot from a neighboring community that hadn't opened school. And so it didn't, we didn't end up adding eighteen new kids to our, to our rosters, but. I'm pleased with what we have so far. And I don't know if you remember, there's only two students in grade six who are school choice, so we're just losing the two, so.
Did you say we're adding eighteen?
No, 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 we added around eighteen applications, maybe, maybe to twenty. Um, but like I said, a lot of that was, um, you know, the applications came out when we were sort of in the thick of things. And, um, in our district, we kind of got things up and running pretty early and had a good thing going on here. And, and I think people were concerned that their community may not, might not ever get there, so.
Do you know if there's any town residents that have kids that would be entering kindergarten that have not applied yet?
Um, Mary's really good at tracking all that down. I honestly don't know if she goes like to people's houses to find out, but, um, she's in contact with Lynn Zabila. And there was one that we hadn't heard from, um, and then they recently found out that that student no longer lives in Whately. So we have accounted for all of the, uh, the incoming kindergarteners who, uh, live in Whately.
Okay.
Next year's going to be interesting because I'm going to be able to fill an entire kindergarten class, a largeish kindergarten class with Whately residents. There's a big boom for that year.
Oh, that's the one we've been waiting for. Yeah. Okay, that's good.
Chrissy, it's Shelley.
Hi, Shelley.
Hi, I'm sorry if I'm breaking protocol and not supposed to speak. Um, but I have had a couple, um, parents with preschoolers that have been inquiring if there will be after school care for those kids. I know at this time, there's no plan to do that, but I do know that there's a few families, um, that keep inquiring about that.
All right, so I don't, I think Amy's not on here anymore, but, um, I will mention it to Amy and maybe it's worth, um, doing a little survey to see if maybe we don't have the right number of people who are interested in it. If we get a certain number, it becomes, you know, financially feasible to, to do it. So maybe we need to get another count of the people who'd be interested in it. Are these, um, folks who have registered for our preschool or?
Um, yeah, yeah, Amber and Candace were, were two of them. Um, but they might be the only ones, so thank you and sorry if I broke the rules.
Nope, nope, that's good.
Okay, um, Darius, did you have anything more to add for your report?
Today I graduated from my three year new superintendent induction program. Now I'm ready to run the district.
Congrats.
It's just been on those reports forever that I've been doing it, a lot of meetings, so, and a lot of, you know, time, but anyways, it's, that's over.
That's great. Um, and we never, um, Kelsey never came on as far as I know. Did, did you want to give a quick update on the racial equality?
Um, in summary, they're, they're going to have a, a joint meeting of the, uh, the different, of the, all the groups to make do for planning next year. Of the, the four different groups of, that make up the anti-recent equity committee. They were talking about that frontiers, they were having student meetings, um, student clubs, and now they're having them in person. And that was happening for the first time this week, given the remote prior to that. Um, and then she had asked questions, if you guys had questions or input for next year. Um, and I guess I would say if you have that, maybe you can shoot me an email and I can sport that onto the committee. But if you have any questions for next year or, um, directions you'd like to see them explore. So that's, that's coming in, um, like I said, they're going to have that meeting, but they said before the end of the year. It was a really brief. I may have been even briefer, but it was a pretty brief overall.
Okay. All right then, um, so that, I, I mean, we'll have to, we're, we're going to go into executive session and then we have to come back to close the meeting, correct?
So what you're going to have to do is I'm going to, you're going to vote, roll call vote to go into executive session. Um, you're all going to leave this meeting and I'll make sure, because I have it on the other screen. And then go into another meeting. We'll have a meeting that we're going to have to come back to do a vote, if you choose to vote, um, the contract. Um, the other meeting, this meeting, if anybody's watching, is going to be left on, it's going to be a blank screen. Um, there's no way for me to not to do that without it starting a new recording time, so. Um, yeah, that's how it works.
Okay, I know there's, is there, there's terminology we're supposed to use.
You need to read it, you need to read number eight.
Off, off the agenda.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, it, am, am I sticking around?
You're free to go. You're free to move out the cabin.
Not that I wouldn't love to hang out a little bit longer, but. Not that I wouldn't love to hang out a little bit longer, but.
And Shelley will be texted if she needs to be invited into executive session to have a discussion. If you have any clarification, you want to talk to her directly, but she's not invited in out of the gate. If that makes sense to you. So the only people going into it are you folks, and hopefully you want me.
Okay. All right.
You have it?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Director of Business Administration?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, we will see you. Everyone vote, we'll see you in a minute.
Thank you.